This time I would like to call to order the 2014 tax budget hearing. This time, I'd like to just give a brief overview of the tax budget. And then I'm going to ask the municipal manager for comments. And then it will be an opportunity for residents to address this hearing with any comments that they have. I want to recognize I asked that you state your name, your address. And limit your comments to five minutes. If you have comments that last longer than that, I ask that you send those to us in writing. As an overview of our tax budget for 2014, this is our proposed income and spending plan. And this is the plan for your tax dollars, the money that you have entrusted with us. So we take this very seriously. This is not just a formality. And I've said before that this is a difficult process because of timeframes. We're actually going to be budgeting money that may not be spent for as much as 18 months from tonight. So it's difficult from a timing standpoint. And it's a difficult process from an information standpoint. Because we were required by law to pass this by a certain date. Yet some numbers we don't have, if we're terrorously from the sources that we need them from, so we make our best assessments. This budget does not authorize spending of any money whatsoever. That happens with appropriations bills. This is just our spending plan. The second part of the process to spend money is a appropriation bill. This is a budget that is better than a balanced budget. If the revenue comes in as projected and as we spend, if we spend as projected, our end of the year balance will climb overall. Our budget is divided up into several funds. The first fund is the general fund. We project, and I'm going to round off to the nearest thousand dollars. We project $1,664,000 in income or revenue and $1,480,000 in expense for a positive balance for the year of $184,000. Said another way, we are only going to spend 89, we are only planning on spending 89% of what we project to receive. And part of the reason for this is to build some fund balances. Funds, as we know, we have higher expenses in future years. For example, if we want to continue to finish the paving job on Wynton Road, we have to accumulate some funds to get matching funds to do that whole thing. We can't accumulate enough funds in one year, so we get a running head start. Let me talk about the income side of the general fund. About 60% of our income comes from income taxes. 21% comes from real estate taxes. 7% comes from fines, licenses and permits. 6% for charges for services. And then another 6% from the all other category. If you look carefully at our general fund proposed spending in this budget, it's an increase in spending of 0%, rounded off, it's a 0% spending increase. On the expense side, we have fully funded all the raises that we did previously this year for next year. And we have not shifted anything to our employees in the form of higher percentages for their health insurance, which is the very big expense, you know, once we get past salaries for the employees here at the village. So that's kind of a little overview of the general fund piece. In addition, we have five, what we call special revenue funds. And that's, those are funds that obtain their revenue from, basically from levies that have been passed. We have a recreation fund, special revenue fund, a police operating special revenue fund, a fire contract fund, a fire equipment fund, and a bond retirement fund. So those are smaller funds that are not included in the general fund that make the rest of our budget. And then the last piece, most governments have some public debt. We call those bonds. We have an out, we will have an outstanding balance on January 1st of 2014 of $3,381,000 in debt, in public debt. And our 2014 principal and interest payments on that outstanding public debt will be $648,300. So that's a little overview of our budget. For people that have looked on the website and seen our budget, we made, I think we're at the fourth iteration that we produced publicly. And as new information becomes available, we have made adjustments through the process. We try to get it out early to folks as possible. And the latest iteration was put up 48 hours ago roughly. And there are some small changes from what was out previously, but there's nothing from a large standpoint as far as additional spending or additional revenue. Just a couple of notes, this is the first budget where we have nothing allocated from the income standpoint from the inheritance fund. And we again are seeing significant decreases in the local fund on the revenue side. So that's kind of my overview. I asked the manager to comment on some questions that she's gotten from the public already or further explain, just a couple of my concerns.
Great, thank you. And actually, she did a great job of it. Thank you. And as Mr. Dree said, the changes that are in this particular draft are all on the revenue side. We did have a breakdown now on property tax versus the real estate allocation. So you'll see some figures in the property tax allocation that you did not previously see. And that did adjust the figures under the real estate tax category. And that is throughout, you'll find that on almost every sheet, with the exception of the debt. So I would like to go, we got some great questions. And I think just going through those would be a good way to summarize and kind of fill folks in. You know, we look at this all the time and it might pummel us, but it's, it can be kind of foreign document to others. So I would like to tie this fun to go through. We have a, in a general fund, a category referred to as lands and buildings. And this is basically our, one of the work that our service department does. In that particular fund, which you would see, if you have a copy in front of you, under the 1,000 general category, about halfway down, there's one called lands and buildings. There's a salary category and then other category. And in the other category, there's about $144,000 that I identified that would go towards like sorcerer repairs, education repairs, sidewalk repairs. We are going to need a new HVA system in here, it would go towards that. And any other large facility expenses, facility green roads, buildings, whatever, lands and buildings, that's what we would use that particular funding for. None of, none of the funds in there are going towards our apartments. That's handled out of its own categories. So it's exclusively our operational facilities and the land that we have.
What is the title of another category?
For apartments, that would be back on, like, the second to the last page. You'll find, it's a slide lay sheet. Exhibit three, exhibit three is a special service fund. And apartments are about, well, the fourth item listed, 2904. Okay, and right now, the, another question was the apartments. Right now, we do have them, so they are paying for themselves. I think this was the first year we didn't have to transfer money from the general fund to pay the taxes, although we were doing that as an advance of paying it back as the revenue came in. We lowered our revenue, but we've also lowered our expenses associated with the apartments right now. Other community environment, if you saw that category, that is actually the post office. So those are ones that cover the post office. And that is salaries, there are about $27,600. And then the operations, there is about a $9,800 charge that we have to pay here. And I get no increase in that from the previous year. The transfers out are always a little bit confusing. That line on this year totals $421,177. That would be at the bottom of the first page of the general fund. And that figure is made out, made up of, if you refer to the very last page of this packet, you'll see the debt, exhibit six, which is debt service for the village. And the amount required principal and interest under non-voted debt, you'll see $371,177. And then I have put in $25,000 to be transferred to the pool and $25,000 to the golf course. And of course, by the final appropriation, it could be something that we do different, but I kind of want to give a little place card in there to hold that kind of funding for those two, those three categories. So that should total up to the figure you have, the $421,177. And then there's a $25,000, which is strictly a contingency. There's no identified amount for that at this point in time. That's just if something comes up that we do not anticipate. That would be a source, heaven forbid, some kind of emergency, but you don't know. That would be money we could turn to if we needed to. We have another fund, the 2011 special revenue for street construction, maintenance and repair, which would be the second page of the tax budget. This covers, this is the one Mr. Dree was mentioning, the funds that we used a lot for matching funds to give grants, the Monroe's. We're going to be using some this year, like, out of this one. But I prefer getting a couple of other things that I'll mention in a little bit. But we did have one question at the top of there. It shows an adjustment for 2013 of $14,794. And I believe that reflects a charge to that account that was then reimbursed by a grant, partially OPWC grant, which we thought we'd closed out at the end of the year, but there was a fact issue in my connection to us. That canceled that expenditure out. Another one is our recreation account, which is in its page, 2014, 241 special revenue. This particular account for our $70,000 that I had identified for this particular year, we have had, actually, a number of various side expenses. We paid for our walk hall system out of there. We did buy a new diving board this year, that was $2,500. The bulk of the fencing machine, which was roughly $4,500. The question on Hilltop, the Hilltop seniors, we've probably only spent about $1,200 on them. It's not as much as we'd been anticipating, there's expenses that have gone way down. At this point in time, we have not made any payments to the gators out of that funding. Our biggest one is the new playground, which has broken ground. And that's a total of about $55,000. That's coming out of that, that amount this year. For next year, I estimate it to be $15,000, $15,000 to total the 30. Just, at this point in time, we don't have any specific items identified for that. And I know there's some additional, lots of additional preparation things we'd like to do and that money will be used for this item that we're identifying. And if I raise some questions, let me know. If I can do this too quickly. Another big account, the 2901 is the police operating account.
I hope that we also start to think, and not that we don't, but that it's more evident to all that we think in terms of sustaining what we have. I know that you guys were looking at maybe fixing some of the fence on the tennis court and everything. It's good to have that money, but I also think oftentimes, like we're experiencing across the nation with bridges and everything else, it doesn't hurt that before we're thinking with some of that. My name is Steve.
Okay, the police operating account, that pays for a large part of the police operations, but it does not pay for all of it. We also have some general fund money. Again, if you look back at the general fund page, that first one, the very first two categories, expenditures, total $220,118 for some of the police expenses. And then the rest of it, we also try to post into the police operating. And that's midway down on the police operating account, we see the 506, 501 that we're charging to that. We are leaving a balance of $40,000, and there's a couple of reasons for that. First, there's a chance that the estimates are wrong. I think it might have been last year that we actually took in less than we thought in each of our levies, which is kind of scary, so it gives us a little cushion there. We're also having some additional personnel expenses this year. In terms of, we've had some officers leave, which means we have to work some other officers overtime. We're making some cash payments for our interim chief, things like that, that I just thought it was wise to leave some later or likely had to appropriate it. So I want to handle the question. Our fire, our 2902 special revenue, fire contracts, which is the next page. The bulk of this goes to the fire department, however, in the capital outlay. This account, as well as the fire equipment account, have been paying, making some payments towards fire trucks and ambulance. The last payment for the 17750 that you see there will be in 2015. So we're coming down, I'm going to stretch on that. That's a great thing. So there's our vehicles, and the payments will end in 2015. We have to split it into the two because there's not enough in the equipment to handle both. So, to handle that total payment, so we can take part of the equipment, part of the contract. I mean, I'll be able to. Questions on that one? Then we go to the, of course, that exhibit three again. We have a little bit of a delay to go. And this should, I will go over from your previous one. We have taken out any, for the convenience of council, we had 2013 in there at one point. Those have come out now, we're looking exclusively at our 2014 projections. And we have some questions regarding the golf course, which does show some personnel expenses there of $5,000. In addition to the contract that we currently have, we are paying for a groundskeeper. And we estimate $5,000 for this year, and I'm estimating another $5,000 for that for next year as well. The rest of that would be contract, you know, chemicals, things like that, that we might leave for the golf course. Accumulated sick leave, that account, you know, it's one of those, it's there when we need it. For a while, we were building it because we were anticipating some retirements. Right now, we are not like in a build mode on that, so that money just kind of sits and waits till we would need it. That's why you don't see much activity there, year to year at this point in time. And then the banquet hall, I have put in $25,000 in expenses. We have been doing a lot of upgrades. And I would anticipate for next year, I think one of the things we'll have to replace probably at least one of the HVAC units, they have five down there. So probably at least one, we were actually able to do repairs on a couple of them this year, and they, yeah, an extended life. But probably at least one we have to replace, maybe two. We're also, we're going to need to send improvements to the old, like the old baby pool area in breaking that up, taking it out, you know, just making some changes there, possibly doing a gazebo or something that will make that a little bit more attractive or actual weddings. But, you know, there's kind of ongoing electrical expenses, plumbing expenses, things like that. That, that, the banquet hall though is self-sustaining at this point in time. When I, when I supplement that, yay, yay! When I supplement that with the general fund, it's a great part. Yeah, that'd be this year. I hope to be able to tap, he asked about the parking lot project that we're going to end this year. We're hoping there might be a balance to tap for that. I'm not sure, but otherwise that would come out of lands and buildings. Let's see, I think I made the rest, we talked about the operations. Apartment operations are working for themselves right now, to the extent that we're doing repairs and we're being in the apartments. The post office was covered under community, other community development. And we covered recreation. So those were the questions that I was thinking. So, any questions?
I think what we'll do is turn this public hearing over to the public. If anyone has any comments or questions, please proceed to the microphone. State your name and address, your topic.
My name is Stad Willer, living on Dayton Road. My question concerning primarily the bond indebtedness. The other part of the documents you read, it pretty much makes sense, but I'm looking at the documents regarding the bonded indebtedness. And I'm just curious, what percentage of that is self-sustaining to the extent that we already have levies in place to take care of? For example, we have a swimming pool that has its own levy. Have you included that in the bonded indebtedness? Because that's already secured, we don't have to worry about it, the money's going to come in for us. What I'm interested in is how much bonded indebtedness we have, where there's no security or revenue stream coming in to pay for it, except from the general fund. So how many, how many millions are we looking at there?
Okay, if I could just back up to our annual one for the 2014. That $371,000 figure that I gave you, that's the one where we have to come up with the general fund money to pay for that.
To pay for the, which set of bonds? The consumatic bonds or the ones for the swimming pool?
No, the swimming pool, the curves, and one redevelopment bond are paid for by levies. And they total.
And those I'm not worried about.
Okay, oh, yeah, any others?
Out of our total indebtedness, $1,293 is secured by voted debt. $2,88,000 is the, are the other two bonds.
That's the council, not the intended.
Those are the outstanding notes, beginning January 1st.
Thank you, got it. Now, as I understand it, those bonds were purchased and the money utilized to purchase apartments and other real estate in the village for the benefit of the village, is that correct?
Yeah, partially, street, it was also used for streetscape, one of the bonds. A combination of streetscape and some acquisition.
So I'm assuming on the asset side, we do have assets, apartment buildings, at some value in the village portfolio then, is that correct? And approximately, what, how are they valued at the present time? Do you have them on the books at the purchase value, which at that time was extremely high, or the fair market value they have now? Because otherwise, I'm afraid the value of the assets may be, appears deflated.
It's clear that the value of the assets has deflated, just like the value of your house has deflated over the last.
No argument, I just want to make sure that we.
In fact, I will share with you, because I think I can.
I'm just curious whether we've adjusted our value for our books to take into account the fact that those assets are of lesser value now.
In 2008, the total value of all real estate, according to the auditor, was $65,407,000 in 2008. In 2012, that same auditor said that our, their value of the real estate in Green Hills was $53 million.
Which a small portion was.
Which is a small portion. There's no balance sheet here to say, in some ways, you're, I appreciate your question, and we certainly know that we bought something and it's worth less today than when it was purchased in many instances, not in all instances, but in some instances. But unless we're using our assets for additional debt, it's somewhat immaterial from a budgetary standpoint.
The reason I bring it up is how many of those are saleable, so they become a liquid asset as opposed to a fixed asset, which would help our balance sheet from the revenue stream side. Because I don't know how many of those apartments are saleable at the present time or usable. Do we have any units now that, for whatever reason, cannot be used, either for health reasons, structural reasons, fire code problems, or whatever? How many of those do we have in our, our portfolio or inventory at the present time, if you know?
I'm going to guess 24, I believe.
24, so we have 24 units for practical purposes, for whatever reason, are unusable.
Well, I would say, I wouldn't use the term unusable. I would say that we have elected not to put additional money into them to turn them into a revenue source at this time, correct?
So it's reasonable to assume that whatever we have there, those 24 units are substandard for whatever reason.
They are not able to be rented right now.
That's correct. And any estimate of what it would cost to repair those units to get them in a usable position or saleable situation?
You know, it really varies unit by unit. I think we could go anywhere from $5,000 all the way up to $25,000, depending on which unit you look at.
The reason it would be better for us as a village then, with some of those units, if they're in bad shape, to destroy them. I hate to destroy a historical building, but it's reached the point we can't afford to keep them. And I was wondering if you'd better off from an asset standpoint, to get it down, reduce any maintenance we have on it, and therefore, it's in the long run, help our general fund, because we can't live, keep living like this. We have what, $2,800,000, as you said, in the consumatic bonds? And it's over our heads, it's going to be for what, 2020, 2015?
Our bond payments continue to increase until 2016, and then they start to decline if we do not refinance, if we do not take in any more debt. That's on the payment side.
So theoretically, if we sell or dispose of, or get rid of some of these, we can use that to reduce at some point in time.
Every time we have sold anything in the last five years, I believe that's an accurate statement, we have taken that money, set it aside, not spent it on roads, salaries or anything, and used it.
I understand. And that's good accounting in a business sense. I'm glad to hear that. What I'm concerned about is the 24 units we've got.
The carrying costs on those are not astronomical by any means. We're not heating them, we're not cooling them, there's no plumbing. We do pay a little bit of property and liability insurance for them. But we're always in a situation where we are evaluating, is this an asset? Whether it be, we have, I'll give you an example of a unit. It's an N unit on a building where there was water damage to it. There's no kitchen in there per se, so it's not usable. We've elected not to put money into that unit. It is available for someone to purchase it if they want to do the rehab themselves. We had an offer, we had accepted an offer, and then the deal did not go through. So we're always in a balancing act of what's the carrying cost versus what is the opportunity to sell it today or in the future?
I understand, I understand that, and I agree. Except, we're also reaching the point, probably with some of those 24 buildings, we're going to look at the safety hazard for our fire department if they have to go in there in the case of a fire, because.
I don't think so. I don't really think any of our buildings are.
The fire department chief isn't here, but I, I'm sure at some point in time, he or someone's going to have concerns about the structure and the structural value of those buildings if they have to do it in an emergency.
I think that's a valid point. We have ongoing, they're fully aware of where the vacant buildings are. And I have a lot of confidence in our chief and his officers with regard to not putting their men at risk for saving property versus saving people's lives. Because we've had conversations about other structures in this village that I don't want to be talking to the spouse of someone that was seriously hurt or killed in a fire and they were trying to save something that money can put back to them.
And that's not even considering the vandalism factor and someone going in and.
And we have, to my knowledge, we have not had any vandalism issues in any of those 24 minutes.
Well, that's up for our new police chief to worry about. He didn't know I came along with a package, did you? That's okay.
Give me about 30 more seconds if you have any comments.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate your comments, thank you.
I'm Diana Kohler, I live at 53 Iwona. And I wanted to thank Avon and council, especially Avon, for addressing my questions. They were very well answered, and I don't have any issue. They were very well answered, and I don't have any additional comments on that, so I'm just, I appreciate all the effort and work included into the budget, and I understand the difficulty in working this far in advance. That was my comment on the budget. I did want to make a comment also on Mr. Willard's comment, as far as the units that the village owns that aren't vacant. I am opposed to demolition of these units. I would like to, I would hope that there would be some other method of taking these units into a usable manner, whether it be the village doing it, or through some type of an incentive in the sale of the unit to a person that would take the historical building and put some life back into it. So that was, I just wanted to let you know my stand as a citizen on the destruction and non-destruction of the units. Thank you very much.
I think that, I think we all have the challenge of respecting the buildings and the history and the heritage, and I think that it's a, it's a back and forth discussion of what's practical to do and, you know, how to pull that off. I do think that it's a very valid point, there's grants available, I don't think anybody, I'm hoping that no one is just looking to tear anything down, and I have heard no talk of that at this point. But we, we value, I believe we value what's here, and we're doing the best we can to retain that where it's feasible.
Mr. Willard's the only one that's mentioned tearing anything down. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Hearing no additional comments from the public, it's time to close the public hearing for the 2014 tax budget.